Let's call the February 28, 2019, meeting of the Parker Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Row call, absent is Eric. Seated for Eric is Ruth Ann. Approval of the minutes, is there any additions or corrections to the minutes from our meeting of January 24, 2019?
No.
Do we have a move to approve?
A motion to approve the minutes of January 24, 2019 meeting? I'll second.
Any good jokes to tell us?
Yeah, don't have any good ones now. It's been moved by Dwayne, seconded by Eliana. I think that we approve the Planning Commission minutes from January 24, 2019. Signify your approval by yes.
If we have to abstain, do we vote no?
There's no abstaining anymore.
So if you, instead of abstaining, vote yes.
Okay.
Said no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Click, click.
The next item on the agenda is number 6A. It is Parker Point, a minor development plat. And we will open the public hearing at 7:03. And turn it over to Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. It's nice to be before you this evening. As was just stated, the first hearing this evening is for case number S U B dash 058. It is for the Parker Point Minor Development Plat. Please note that the applicant has provided the appropriate posting and notification affidavits as required by the Towns Code. The subject property for this request is located at the southeast corner of Parker Road and Stro Road. To the north is undeveloped commercial pad sites. To the northeast are developed commercial pad sites. To the west are a combination of developed and undeveloped commercial pad sites. To the south is Kenny Creek, and to the east is the Colorado Golf Club. The subject property was annexed and zoned modified commercial by the town in August of 2018. The property totals about 14 acres in size. And the applicant has submitted this minor development plat in order to create 15 lots for commercial development and two tracks on the south side of the property that would be dedicated to the town as they're encumbered by the 100-year floodplain and the Pebbles Meadow jumping mouse habitat. So the request this evening is for a minor development plat. What does that mean? A minor development plat is a type of subdivision application. Generally speaking, the review is for lot sizes and lot layout, ensuring that those meet Town standards. There is also a review of the shared improvements for the development to ensure that those meet Town and our referral agency partner standards. Staff's recommendation this evening, as well as Planning Commission's recommendation, and ultimately Town Council action will be based on the six approval criteria that will be later in the presentation this evening. Individual site improvements for site-specific development are not evaluated as part of the minor development plat. If the minor development plat is approved, any site-specific improvements are reviewed and evaluated at the time of the site plan submittal. Within the town's master plan, the subject property is identified as a community center. What that means is it is intended to serve a large regional commercial base. Uses that are identified in the master plan that would be consistent with this type of designation would be a variety of retail services, personal services, business services, office, recreation, restaurants. The request to plat lots for commercial development is consistent with the town's master plan designation. Again, the site is zoned modified commercial. This modified commercial allows for general retail uses, general office uses, some restricted drive-through uses at the northwest corner of the site, which is the blue box on the image in front of you. The zoning for the property does establish one minimum lot standard, and that is a minimum lot width of 75 feet. The smallest proposed minimum lot width with this request is for 96 feet wide. The commercial, the, excuse me, the creation of the commercial lots would be consistent with the zoning for the property. This next image is an image of the minor development plat that's been proposed. The 15 lots are shown with the red lines that are, that are shown on the image. The two town, the two tracks that would be dedicated to the town are on the right-hand side of the image, shown with the green lines. The blue circles would indicate the general location for the right-in, right-out accesses for the subject property. And then the yellow star, kind of on the top left-hand corner, shows a general location to a full movement access that's off-site that the developer has obtained easements to utilize that full movement intersection. As part of the development of the subject property, the developer would be obligated to make improvements to both Parker Road and Stro Road. There are financial contribution obligation for future Kenny Creek Trail improvements on the south side along Kenny Creek Trail. There's a financial obligation for tree mitigation. There's a financial obligation for an off-site sanitary sewer easement. The applicant will need to get access, an access permit from CDOT prior to the, prior to issuing of a grading permit. They will need to obtain all approvals from Douglas County for their off-site detention drainage pond prior to the grading permit. Also approval from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for any work in the repairing zone prior to the town issuing a grading permit. The overhead power lines that are currently on the property will be placed underground. And then there will need to be improvements for access to connect to the full movement access to the east of the property. The six approval criteria that were just referenced earlier in the presentation. One is that it's consistent with the town master plan, as previously discussed and is detailed in staff's report. The request does comply with the town master plan. That the request complies with the land development ordinance and all other standards of the town. That has been reviewed by the town and our referral agency partners and determined that the application meets that requirement. That the application complies with the applicable zone district standards. Again, the minimum lot width for all of these lots do meet the minimum lot width standard. Again, the public notice requirements have been met. Those have been made a part of the record. The applicant has provide a signed subdivision agreement as part of this, this project. And all public dedications have been satisfied by the applicant. In terms of referral agency responses, all referral agencies responded with either advisory comments or an approval comment for this request. With that, staff would recommend, the Planning Commission recommends that Town Council approve the request for a minor development plat at the southeast corner of Parker and Stro Road. That would conclude staff's presentation, but certainly we are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Questions for Paul?
Yeah. I'd just ask a question about that full movement access on Stro. Is that going to be a light there, traffic light there, or how's that going to work?
Uh, no, it's a controlled four-way stop, but, correct? No. I'll defer to the engineer on that. How about?
I know we looked at this when we looked at that section north of there, but...
Yeah, no, it will be, you know, a standard two-way stop, full movement access. Apologize. No signal, the, the background traffic volumes on Stro Road long-term aren't going to be high enough to justify a signal there long-term, so it'll just be basically a two-way stop on the two minor roads. Stro Road will be a through condition, but it will be a full movement access.
Other questions?
So are all 15 lots going to be, are they, will one developer develop all 15 lots? Or are they individually owned and each lot will have to go through its own development?
The most likely scenario is the majority of the 15 lots will be developed by individual developers for specific users, which would then require separate site plan submittals and, and review through, through the normal process.
I was confused by the discussion of drainage for the area that's being dedicated to Parker for the, for the benefit of the mouse. Would there be any improvements being done in that area in order to take care of drainage, or would that just be left natural? What's the...
Exactly. That area would be left natural with no new impervious or no new improvements in those areas.
Okay.
Will further traffic analysis be done for each individual site plan as it comes in?
Yeah, so each site that comes in will have to give us what's called a traffic conformance letter that shows the user proposing is in accordance with the master study that the developer's provided for this.
Okay, got you. And then likewise, I see, I think perimeter landscaping is being provided. Will additional landscaping be provided with each site plan?
That's correct. Each individual lots will be required to meet the landscape requirements.
Okay.
Further questions?
One, a couple quick. The, um, for the referral agency comments, are those, do those need to be done prior to the development and not now? I noticed there's some fire, you know, the fire hydrant. There's some utility easements. So are those, more of a curiosity question, are those done after this is approved? Or is that part of this approval process? And then with this approval process, whoever develops this has to abide by some of these referral comments?
More accurately, the second half of that statement, which is, it all needs to be done as part of the approval, and there's certain triggers within the permitting process that, that the town uses in order to ensure that all of those referral agency advisory comments have been satisfied. Again, the, a couple of common ones you saw during the presentation is the developer will still need to get an approved grading permit from the town. And so some of those things will mean, will need to be taken care of before the town will issue that permit.
Paul, is the applicant to have a presentation?
Uh, there is no presentation that I'm aware of, but the applicant is available if, if Planning Commission does have questions for them.
Questions for the applicant? Okay. Then we will, since this is a public hearing, we will open the meeting to public comment. If you have a comment regarding this matter before the Planning Commission, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Do we need further information from Paul or the applicant?
No.
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 We will close the public hearing at 7:14. Commissioner, discussion?
Cut and dry.
Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward that, you know, where this piece of property is located on that corner. Definitely a commercial corner that needs to be developed over time, so I think this sets the stage for it properly, so I'm in support.
Yeah, I think it meets, clearly meets all the approval criteria.
I'm good. I agree with my fellow commissioners.
I concur with my fellow commissioners.
I, I agree also.
Looks like we're all in agreement here. Do we have a motion?
I move Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the minor development plat.
Second?
It's been moved by Eliana, seconded by Kelly, that, I gotta get to my paperwork here. That Planning Commission recommend the minor development plat. All those in favor signify by yes.
Yes.
When it gets to... Let's see it. Oh, there it is. Okay. All right, item 6B, Compar Village filing number four, amendment number one, minor development plat. And we will turn it over, we will open the public hearing at 7:16. We'll turn it over to Stacy.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commission members. So this is a proposal for a minor development plat to subdivide the property into two lots and two tracks. This property has been posted and all public notice requirements have been satisfied. So the property is located south of Compar Boulevard, north of E-470, and west of Chambers Road. The property was annexed and zoned as part of the Compar Village Plan Development in 2007. Compar Village and Cottonwood Highlands, which is an adjacent development, traded several parcels of land without subdividing those parcels as required by the Parker Land Development Ordinance. Therefore, in 2011, several ordinance were approved to clean up the parcel trades. At the same time, the property was platted as part of an exemption plat. The applicant has submitted this minor development plat to subdivide four unbuiltable tracks into two buildable lots, a detention pond tract and an unbuiltable tract for future development. The proposed minor development plat will plat the property into lots and tracks only. This plat does not have any infrastructure or off-site improvements associated with it. Most of these improvements have already been completed. The buildable lots would allow for the development of commercial and industrial uses on the property per the Compar Village Plan Development. Site plan applications have been submitted for vertical construction of office warehouse buildings on the site, which will be reviewed administratively. The purpose of the minor development plat process is to review lot sizes and layout for compliance with Town standards. The proposed subdivision of the property is consistent with the requirements outlined within the land development ordinance and the zoning on the property. The proposed lot sizes, lot widths, lot coverage, access and circulation proposed meet the minimum requirements outlined. Additional requirements, including the building setbacks, building height, landscaping, and parking will all be determined at the time of the site plan. The general land use map within the Parker 2035 master plan identifies this property as being within the E-470 employment character area. This property is represented, represented by the red rectangle in the center of the map. This designation calls for a mix of uses, including office, retail and development, flex office, and light industrial. Based on this analysis, staff has determined that the request to subdivide the property to allow for the future development of office warehouse is consistent with the recommendations of the Parker 2035 master plan. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the 2035 master plan, the land development ordinance, and the Compar Village Plan Development. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. Referral agency comments have been addressed, and all public notice requirements have been satisfied. Therefore, staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the Compar Village filing number four, amendment number one, minor development plat. This concludes the staff's presentation. The applicant is also here and would like to introduce themselves and give you a couple comments.
Okay, questions for Stacy on this project?
What are the immediate plans?
So the immediate plans, tonight what we're looking at is just creating two buildable lots. And those two buildable lots, there's a detention pond associated with it, that's track A. And then the two buildable lots would allow for construction of some office warehouse buildings on them. So there has been the site plan submitted to build those two buildings associated with all the landscaping and parking and lighting and everything else.
So with the drawing that we're looking at, are the two lots on the right going to be combined and the two lots on the left?
So right now, so you see track A, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
That is the detention pond. This is lot one. That will be one of the buildable lots. And then this is lot two, the other buildable lot. This is track B. That's an unbuiltable tract, which when they go for development will be replatted into buildable lots in the future. Right now, I believe it's proposed to divide track B into two lots.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Can you define exemption tract, what it started out as?
So there's several different processes to plat a property. An exemption plat is one of those ways. It's pretty much exempting the plat from the subdivision requirements. So you don't have to go through all of the review of the plat for lot size, lot width, what the future use is going to be, access, circulation, those sort of things. It's exempting it from those subdivision regulations.
So you can just set it aside and deal with it later?
Right.
That's the point?
Yeah. So what happened in 2011, there was a bunch of trades, property trades. And one of the ways to clean it up was to plat the property into unbuiltable tracks so that it all fell within one plan development and one zoning.
So the concept of unbuiltable tract means that it simply hasn't been processed to the point administratively where you could decide what you were going to put on it?
You could decide what you're going to put on it, but you couldn't do it until you platted it.
Well, you know what I mean.
Yeah, exactly.
So unbuiltable doesn't mean that there's something physically wrong with the property, making it unbuiltable. It's a legal status?
Right. It means you just can't do anything with it until you bring it to us to review at first.
Okay.
Yes.
Will traffic study be done as part of the site plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so a traffic study was, or submitted with us, which was reviewed. But yeah, as each use comes in, in the buildings, we will look at that again.
Okay.
Further questions? Does the applicant want to step forward? State your name and address for the record?
Hi. I wasn't planning on talking, but Stacy forced me. Dave Kleba with Atkins Johnson, we're the developer. Nice to meet you all. And we look forward to high-quality development on the site in due time. Address, 5 Blue Grouse Ridge Road, Littleton.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Further questions? All right, as this is a public hearing, we will open the discussion to public comment. If you have a comment on this particular project, step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. We need any further information? All right, then we will close the public hearing at 7:23. Planning Commission, discussion?
I think this is pretty consistent with the area around there. And I appreciate Ruth Ann's questions about unbuiltable and exempt. So good lessons learned, but it seems very straightforward to me, so I'm, I'm for it.
I would agree. Very straightforward.
I think it would be nice to have additional employment in Parker.
I agree that it complies with all six criteria.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree that it meets the master plan, current master plan, 2035 master plan, and land development around that area, so.
Sounds like we are all in agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Compar Village filing number four, amendment number one, minor development plat.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Dwayne, seconded by Rich, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Compar Village filing number four, amendment number one, minor development plat. Signify your approval by yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right, next item, item 6C. Ordinance number 3.25.1, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance number 3.25 by the deletion of certain property from the planned development zoned area known as the Country Meadows Plan Development. We will open the public hearing at 7:25. Stacy?
Thank you again, Chairman and Planning Commission. So the purpose of tonight's hearing is to amend the Country Meadows Plan Development to remove the commercial area from the planned development. So the property is located at the northwest corner of Parker Road and Hess Road. The intent of this ordinance is to clean up the Country Meadows Plan Development zoning by removing the commercial area from the planned development. The commercial lots within the Country Meadows Plan Development were rezoned to see commercial in April of 2018. In April of 2018, the property owners requested a rezoning to bring the uses allowed on the property up to date. This rezoning aligned the uses permitted by zoning, permitted by zoning with the Parker 2035 master plan's vision for a neighborhood center. The Country Meadows Plan Development still exists for the residential areas surrounding the commercial lots. You can kind of see that around the green area. But a zoning map change was processed and approved for the commercial lots. The proposed ordinance to remove the commercial lots from the Country Meadows Plan Development is not required, but creates documentation that the planned development zoning no longer applies to the commercial properties. Based on this information, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve ordinance 3.25.1. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Stacy?
Where did this request get initiated from?
Good question. So it recently came up that our map, our zoning map was incorrect because it was still showing that the planned development applied to the commercial lots. I mean, there was some confusion of what applied. Was it the commercial zoning of the town regulations or the commercial zoning of the Country Meadows Plan Development? And so talking through that, we decided that it was probably best to process an amendment to the Country Meadows Plan Development just to remove those commercial properties. So it no longer applied, so there wouldn't be any confusion.
So the issue arose internally in the department, not through any outside entity that brought the issue to you?
Correct.
Okay.
Further questions?
So this, I mean, this is still going to be commercial development. Was, I, I'm not going to lie, I was a little confused. Was there an overlay of, or is the, by getting rid of the commercial lots within the Meadow, Meadow Meadow, Country Meadows Plan Development, it will bring it to now the standards in Parker as commercial development?
Correct. So what happened was the owners of some of the lots within the commercial area came to us last year. And the zoning for Country Meadows was done in 1983. And some of the uses that were written into that were very different. And so as zoning and practices and development have occurred over time and progressed, those really didn't apply to that property anymore. And so they wanted to do a change to that zoning, to bring it up to date. And the town really wanted to bring those into the Towns Code and make it more see commercial to fit with what we want as a town and our vision for commercial properties. And so the property owners agreed to zone it commercial, and so we rezoned it at that time. time. This, so it's been commercial, it's going to stay commercial. This is just trying to get rid of that confusion of which zoning actually applies to the property.
I remember when this came up.
Yes, last fall. Yeah.
Okay.
Further question?
No.
Okay. As this is a public hearing, we will open discussion to public comment. Don't seem any public left. We will close the public comment. Any further information needed?
No.
No.
This is administrative.
They will close the public hearing at 7:30. Planning Commission, discussion.
I think the request makes a lot of sense, and it's probably just more administrative than anything else.
I agree.
I agree.
We're all in agreement, then. I move the Planning Comi, oh, no. We, I was getting carried away there really fast. Do we have a motion, please?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve ordinance number 3.25.1.
I second.
It's been moved by Ruth Ann, seconded by Eliana, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve ordinance number 3.25.1. Signify your approval by yes. Okay. Staff items, Bryce?
No, sir, there are not.
Questions for staff?
Nope.
Seeing none, then we will adjourn the meeting at 7:30.